All right, good afternoon. All right, good afternoon, everybody. We have a special meeting in the City Council of the City at Cape May. We are here in the City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. The time is just one... The time is 2:31. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings law, notice of this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the press of Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council, posted on the City website and the City Hall Bulletin Board. Notice is hereby provided that Cape May City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullick?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillensschwartz is en route and will participate in the closed session. City Manager Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Turner?
Here.
We have one resolution, 253-08-2025, a resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10,412. This is to discuss collective bargaining negotiations for UAW Local 2327 Middle Management.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Mullick?
Yes.
Public Portion Mayor?
Anyone here wishing to speak on the closed session? I see no one in attendance. We'll close public comment and move into the closed session.
Time is 2:34.
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. We are coming out of a closed session, which we need to close with no further action. Do I have a motion to close the executive session?
I'll make that in a second.
Thank you. We don't need a roll call, right? Okay, great. With that, we will open up our special meeting of the City Council, the City of Cape May. We are here in the Cape May City Hall Auditorium. Today is Tuesday, August 19th, 2025. The time is now four minutes past 3:00 p.m. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the Open Public Meetings Law, notice that this meeting was sent to the Cape May County Herald and the press at Atlantic City, and a copy of the agenda was delivered to each member of City Council, posted on the city website and city hall bulletin board. Notice is hereby provided that City Council meetings are audio recorded and/or video streamed live. Live video streams are posted to the Cape May City website. City of Cape May is not responsible if audio recording or live video streaming of a meeting is unavailable. Roll call. Councilmember Baldwin?
Here.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Here.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Here.
Councilmember Meyer?
Here.
Mayor Mullock?
Here.
City Solicitor Gillen-Schwarz?
Here.
City Manager Dietrich?
Here.
Deputy Manager Riggs?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Turner?
Here.
And CFO Haney?
Here.
Any additions or deletions tonight, council?
Any additions or deletions, council? Seeing none, we can move right on to presentations. We have with us this evening Vince Orlando of EDA and his staff here. If they want to come up and introduce yourselves and...
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Good afternoon, members and council. Again, my name is Vince Orlando. I am a partner of firm of engineering design associates, and we've been working, thank you. We've been working along with, of course, the council and the staff here on a couple of different projects. To my media writers, Nicole Wells. Nicole, I think, has been here a number of times. You know, she was integrated to the Kiwanis Park, and she's been the project manager on the Harborview Park. And to her right is Patrick, one of our newest engineers. Patrick is working on two projects. He's working on the rehabilitation of sidewalks and curbs in the community, which will be a project that'll take place hopefully this fall. And he's also working on the ADA-compatible sidewalks for the tennis courts, along with the improvements for a restroom and some ADA ramping. So, since I don't know very little about the projects, not really, but I'd like Nicole to present the Harborview Park. But before I do, I did have a brief discussion with the manager and the mayor, and I know some of the residents here are concerned about... and I know some of the residents here are concerned about some of the trees. D. Lanz and I go back 40 years, probably. So, one of the things I had recommended to the mayor is that before we make the final selections, we would sit down with a group of you guys, kind of work through some of the tree selections of the placements, so that at the end of the day, everybody's happy. Because the idea of the park is not only for people that are coming there, but also the people that live there. So, obviously, you'll have an opportunity to talk, but the mayor wanted me to extend that we would have a small group come out, we'll meet at these house, and we'll be able to present you with the landscaping that we have there.
Vince, if I could just add, because I know you already have, and Nicole as well, but also just adding in the shade tree commission to the mix, just to make sure we're...
We already have their approval.
Yep, perfect. Thank you.
With some minor recommendations. So, I... I've been reluctant to be the hand dryer. I do have a couple of extra copies.
Thank you.
I'm going to keep one. Then I have none.
I'll share. I have a couple of extra small ones.
That's okay. So, before Nicole gets started, I just wanted to kind of talk about the whole theme of Harborview Park and what was the intent. I think, you know, Deputy Mayor McDade kind of spearheaded this initially, along with Councilwoman Baldwin, about keeping kind of a passive park, a park where you could go and sit and relax, not an active park, not a playground, really kind of just a destination, just for some tranquility. So, the park has been designed to really introduce those elements of tranquility by providing a whole lot of amenities that Nicole will get into. But that was kind of the guidance that we got from city council on this project. So, take it away, Nicole. You may want to take the mic.
If you don't mind, yep, you can, right up to your mouth. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council, community. My name is Nicole Welsh. I'm a landscape architect with Vince Orlando at Engineering Design Associates. So, he just gave a small little intro of Harborview Park. But for those who aren't familiar with it, it's a triangular-shaped park at the end of Texas Avenue, right at the waterfront of Skeleander's Creek, kind of catty corner across the water from the Lobster House.
Nicole, before we go any further, just because we don't get to see you very often.
Yes.
And I just want to compliment you on Kiwanis Club Park.
Thank you.
Because we see you here to talk about the design, and then we don't see you again. But I just want to share with you how beautiful it is to see those kids playing. Anybody here in Cape May knows we have Camp Cape May. That just ended, and I want to thank all our people involved with Camp Cape May. But it was really, it's really a wonderful program. But this was the first full season that they had to use Kiwanis Club Park. And all of your thought that went into that in regards to, you know, even the braille on the naming of the trees and just learning, the kids being able to learn about the ecology within the park, and frankly, just the play, you know, they had just such a wonderful time. So, those little design details that you added, probably to a very rough plan from Vince, was really a wonderful thing. So, I just want to thank you on that first, and then, sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay, so yeah, so currently at Harborview Park, like Vince said, it's a passive park. It's meant for watching the boats, watching the sunset, reading a book, just, you know, hanging out in nature. There's currently three gazebo structures, which are a little bit in disrepair. You've all seen them. They're not quite dilapidated, but, you know, almost there. There's an existing boardwalk promenade along the water that is a composite boardwalk, and it's warping and definitely needs repair on that one. The vegetation, a lot of it is overgrown or invaded with invasive vines that are killing some of the trees. And there's site furnishings, a lot of benches and tables that are mishmash. Nothing is cohesive, none of them match, and they don't really make sense. And there's also existing, I think, 12 parking spaces in the front. So, our plan, what we're proposing, we will... First order of business, more parking, right? So, there's existing 12 parking spaces. We're going to remove part of the curb and continue the parking spaces to a total of, I think there's 18? I'd have to go back and look, I'm sorry. And so currently, there's an existing concrete walkway system that goes throughout. Part of the walkway, we're going to keep. So, if you see the dark gray concrete walkway, we're going to keep that. But then everything else that's highlighted in yellow, concrete walkway is all going to be new. We'll have new concrete sidewalk along the entire park, the perimeter, a new promenade. And instead of wood or composite, we're going to use a concrete planking boardwalk for the promenade. A new railing along the promenade, that'll be wood and steel framework, like a mesh screen kind of railing. We're going to have new seating along the entire promenade. And then, a new gazebo in the center, where it's highlighted in orange. Around the gazebo, this will be a new walkway that kind of ramps up. The gazebo will be slightly elevated, so there'll be a couple steps up to the gazebo, a ramp on this side and a ramp back down. And then, this is all new concrete here. So, this will be a new concrete walkway along here that abuts a concrete retaining wall that will be retaining all of this earthwork here that'll be bermed up and landscaped. And within that area, we'll have a lot of landscaping and then seating. The seating will be for picnicking, and also some of them will have chess or checker game tables. So, people can go and play games or picnic. Some of the seating will be four-seater and others will be three-seater to allow wheelchair for handicap accessibility. In the center here, there's a triangle that's going to be a planter, a raised planter, with a large bench, you know, one bench along the water side to view the water. This rectangle right here, that's going to be a terrace seating system. So, thinking about like just the opportunities we have to sit, to view, to contemplate, instead of just a bench. So, this terrace seating system, it's modular, and you can lounge, you can climb up to it, you can get to a level. So, it gives you a couple different levels of viewing, so that you can view the water and the boats. All of the seating elements here will be the same consistency of materials. So, they'll be, these are all wood, and the bottom will be powder-coated steel. Along this retaining wall, that curved dark line, the front of the retaining wall will be a long linear curved bench like that. And we're going to provide lighting underneath the bench, so it'll just be very subtle, just accent lighting. This is an image of the triangular planter that I mentioned. And then throughout the park, there's three red asterisks, one right there, one right there, and one in the center of the planter. Those are going to be kinetic sculptures, so they'll move with the wind. These sculptures right here, we did work with the local art commission and picked out a couple really nice pieces. So, those will just add movement and just a flow into the space. It kind of reminds me, very nautical themed with that. There is an existing anchor right in the very front where the sign is. We're going to replace the sign with a brand-new sign, and the existing anchor will be replay, will remain, but just be repositioned. These are some of the images of the seating available, with the chessboard seating, the benches along the promenade as well. And those are all the same companies, so that'll be a cohesive language with the seating elements. So, the grant through the county had the open space grant. Now, we're not required to use a lot of their placemaking elements, but there's really nice furniture that they have. So, we kept with some of the placemaking elements, however, we altered them slightly, just knowing that it's going to be against the elements, you know, with the saltwater and the air, and making sure that we're not going to have these things corrode very shortly. So, these companies that we're working with, they all do an e-coating, which is like a primer before they do a powder coating. So, it protects it against, you know, the elements that we're facing.
Nicole, I think people may be familiar with the benches from the New Nature Trails, at least for...
Yes, same benches, different color. Yes. And then, so then the trash receptacles.
The railing that we're using here is the same railing that we used on the...
Oh, that's great.
Yes, same railing at the Nature Trails.
And we've gotten a lot of compliments on that.
And the trash receptacles, I believe, were the same at the Nature, so same, just different color. You know, these will be blue. And then also, just a regular-style picnic table that's ADA-accessible, so you can have a wheelchair on one side of it. Some other seating that we're going to be providing is Adirondack-style seating, and those are highlighted on the plan. There's just little red squares and yellow boxes throughout. So, what those are going to be are regular-style Adirondack seating. Along the water on the promenade, there's going to be double Adirondacks, like it's a bench style. And then, in the grass area, there'll be some loungers, so all in the Adirondack style of seating. But then, gives you a place to just lounge in the grass, get some sun, read a book. This is an image of the gazebo that we're proposing. Yes, sure. They're all going to... Mm-hmm. They're very heavy-duty, so each one, I don't know how much they weigh, but... Mm-hmm. Doesn't matter what the wind.
Excuse me, guys. We're going to need a microphone if we're going to, I don't know if we're taking questions at this point.
Just so we stay in order, I'm going to open it up to questions for all, anybody, yep.
But just to answer that right now, I do have concrete pads at each of the bases of all of the Adirondack-style seating within the grass, and they'll all be anchored into that pad. And that also just cleans up the space, so that, maintenance-wise, there's not an Adirondack chair and then, you know, getting damaged by the weed whacker or anything like that. So, it'll just be a nice clean concrete pad underneath each of the sections of chairs, and they'll be anchored to the concrete. Where else? Yeah, here's an image of the railing, like we said, just like at the trail system, a new Harborview Park sign. And there's an existing compass, stone lay, that's inlaid into the concrete walkway that's located right there. We're going to keep that, but just repair it. There's, it's just a little bit of repair that's needed around the stone. And as far as landscaping, oh, let me go back to lighting. We have some bollard lighting that we're going to provide along the walkway. They're very low-level lighting, an amber kind of color to it. And they, it'll be frosted glass within the bollards, so it's not going to be a very bright light. It'll be a very nice subtle light. And then the hood on the bollard light kind of deflects the lighting down onto the pathway.
Because we added any concerns, I think the lighting at Kiwanis Park was a little bit bright for that neighborhood. So, we took that into account here, with some research. So, the light will not be visible. It'll be a downward light with a hood. So, we're trying to be a little bit more sensitive to the residential neighborhood now.
And in addition to the bollard lighting, like I said, there will be a little accent lighting under the benches. There's also going to be a single pendant light in the gazebo, and then a couple spotlights that'll just be focusing on the sculptures and the main entrance sign, just to illuminate, you know, so they'll be low-level again. And then as far as landscaping, we have, there's currently some berm, raised berms planted in the park. I really like that feature, and this front one, I'm going to keep in the same exact position and just remove the vegetation that needs to be removed and replant it. The other two are going to just be reoriented, but we're still going to keep those berm structures and plant them with native shrubs, perennials, evergreen trees, flowering trees, and then some shade trees, some small flowering trees along the promenade. I have some areas where it's focused on screening, and then other areas where it's focused more on some perennial pollinator gardens. Like, kind of at the base of all of the sculptures will be a lot of perennials, butterfly weed and some day lilies and muley grass and lavender, no, not lavender, I took that out, cat mint. Muley grass, which is a really nice grass. It's an ornamental grass. It has pink efflorescence on the seed heads, and it's really nice when it blows in the wind. Yeah, I think that's pretty much it. Any questions?
Any questions from council first?
No, I would just like to make a comment. I was the council liaison on this project, working with Vince and Nicole, and you did a fabulous job. You kind of really took the idea that I had about this park. Living down in that end of town, I've been there many times over the years. It's used by people just to go and sit, have a cup of coffee, meet somebody, have a quick lunch. So, I'm really pleased that we were able to maintain that, the ambiance of that, and really leaned into it. And the county, I have to say, the open space was so receptive to this design and the concept. This is not something that really, quite frankly, exists anywhere else in the county in this kind of form. So, when they heard what, you know, our intent was, to maintain it and really lend itself so that it could be used for, you know, residents and visitors for that purpose and intent, they were very supportive of it. So, I'm really very happy with the way things turned out. And those of us who lived down that end of town are really looking forward to having this done and being brought up to the standard that it should be. So, thank you both for your involvement.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Nicole.
Yeah, just one more thing, the irrigation of it.
Yes, we are going to have irrigation. So, there's, yeah, there's existing water spigots throughout that we'll use that and then relocate to the irrigation box location will be where the electrical boxes are. And right now, the electrical is kind of exposed, so we'll create, you know, a formal electrical box cabinet that the electric will be in, and then right next to it, the irrigation controls. And yes, the whole site will be irrigated.
I would like to say that it's a beautiful design. I really like the gazebo. Really ties in the whole town feel with that. I could see some weddings being here, you know, small, you know, intimate weddings. I think the adding of the parking is a no-brainer, but it's still brilliant, because I've, you know, I've spent so many hours parked there with, you know, a family member or a friend just chatting, and people just love looking at that view, having their lunch there, and I think it's, you know, a great design.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Meyer, thank you to the Shade Tree Commission as well for reviewing these. And it sounds like they might have a little bit more work, but that's good, so.
Environmental also do.
Environmental commission, yeah, thank you.
And I just want to add, a few months ago, I had lunch at the Lobster House, and I was looking across the creek, trying to see if I could see where the park would be and envision what the proposal is. And I think this kinetic sculpture that is located near the water, I think you're going to be able to see it from outdoor seating at the Lobster House. So, I think that'll be an exciting element to bring people, you know, ooh, what's that over there? Let's go check out that park, you know.
Yeah, very cool. With that, if everyone's comfortable, I'd like to open it up to public comment. If anyone, we'll keep it just to the park at this point, but if anyone, and by the way, if you're here for something else, we will have another public comment. But for the park, if anyone has anything they'd like to say, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, if you would, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Eunice King, and my husband David and I live at Two Harbor Cove, which is really between Harbor Cove and Texas Avenue. So, we have a dead-on view of the park. And for a long time, we've looked at that and thought, what a beautiful park that could be. And I thank you for paying attention to it and working on this beautiful design for it. We really do. But I'm here on behalf of my neighbors, because we do have some concerns about the number of trees that are projected to be planted in the park and the height to which they may grow. As we count up the quantity on your graph, we total up 87... As we count up the quantity on your graph, we total up 87 trees. That seems like an awful lot of trees for this park. It's not a really big park. The other thing that we're concerned about is how high these trees can grow. Now, I also looked at the height that is listed in the list of the plantings, and most of them are five to eight or nine feet at this point.
That's the height at planting.
At planting.
Yes.
That's very different from maturity.
Correct.
I looked up each one of these species of trees, and most grow up to around 60 feet, and some of them, the willow oaks, grow up as high as 100 feet. That is really, really high. Okay? And our concern is that having that density of trees is really going to obliterate the view that you're so carefully planning for people to come and sit in the park and enjoy. Would also obliterate the view from anyone driving down Texas Avenue, and for many of us who live around the park. So that is our major, one of our major, major concerns. The other thing that we're concerned about is the overall maintenance of the park. Maintaining 87 trees properly is a very expensive proposition. I know, because I've maintained lesser numbers than that, and that's a lot. And I don't know what the budget for that will be. I'm assuming that there's no money in the initial grant to pay for maintenance forthcoming. So I think that's another thing that really needs to be addressed. And then the other concern, and it sounds like you have addressed this, is the kinds of materials that are being used for the railings, for the non-tree structures, for the seating and that kind of thing. So I would say the two points that I'd like to make are concern about the number of trees and the height that those trees can grow to. And by the way, I did some calculation, and some of those trees could be up to 20 feet within five years. That's high. That's about the height of a two-story house. So that is our concern. I would say, going forward, please give some attention to reducing the number of trees. Maybe consider using fewer trees, two, three, or four. Nice trees, I think, would be plenty in there. And ones that would be lower, that aren't going to grow as high, that maybe spread out a bit, and shrubs. I think that would make for a beautiful, really tranquil park that everyone could enjoy from many different angles. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Ross Johnson, 826 Lafayette Street. My comment is more on a practical manner. I visit the nature trail almost every day. Thank you very much, and thank you for the sign. And the railing there is very beautiful, but many of the people that have visited there, especially visitors with families, really complain about the seagull poop that is on the railings. The seagulls love to perch on that railing. And if you come there when no one else is there, you'll see the seagulls lined up on the railing. And if you know anything about children, pretty much the first thing they do, they want to always jump in to look over, you know, the barrier that's there. So their first reaction is to go, wow, look at that! And then on their arms is full of seagull poop. So I don't know. I believe there are some deterrents. Of course, we don't want to, you know, do anything to harm seagulls, but if you could maybe think of something that would, I think, irregular railings that they don't perch on, they don't perch on as much, railings that are irregular. But the railing at the nature trail is perfect for them to sit on and feel comfortable, and that is wonderful to some extent. But as a parent and grandparent with little kids full of seagull poop, not so cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dee Lanzalotti from Four Harbor Cove in Cape May. I just want to compliment you on the plan. I think it's beautiful.
Thank you.
It's really beautiful. I'm excited, worried about the wind. Actually, you'll find this incredible, but I live right across, and after living in my house for 25 years, my Anderson sliding doors were bowing in. Now, they weren't hurricane doors. I did replace them with hurricane doors, but that wind is such a force there that it's a worry to me if things aren't anchored down properly, that they'll be blowing around. So thank you for taking that into consideration. And like Eunice, we all have the concern about how many trees. And Vince said maybe we can all get together and meet and talk about that and come up with suggestions and ideas, because it's a beautiful area. People really enjoy it. I watch people jogging there. The Coast Guard event is next week there. Weddings have taken place there. It's a beautiful park, but it's underappreciated because it has grown so much and the trees are so high, you can't see the harbor any longer. So your ideas are great, and I think that if we could look at the species of trees and the height and really maybe reconsider some of that, it'd really be appreciated. Okay? Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you, Dee.
I'm Mary McKenney, and my husband Theodore and I live at 33 Harbor Cove. Hello to all of you. And I also want to echo the thanks that's been expressed here, especially in the work that was put forth to get the grant. Wonderful to be able to get that. So thank you all for all the hard work and the beautiful design. I want to specifically address the compass rose, the granite compass that you've referenced, because that was put in by my husband Ted when we had the stone business. We've done other things as donations in town, at the nature center, all the stone in there, and at Cape May Stage, the bathrooms, which Roy Steidberg said were the reason he came to the theater. So that's kind of cool. Anyway, what I want to mention, and it really goes along the lines of maintenance, when we put that compass rose in, Ted had given the information to the contractor at the time, who was putting in stained concrete. The stain disappeared very quickly. We had addressed the issue of where the compass rose was placed, because we had provided measurements to the contractor, which he didn't believe us, I guess, didn't know we knew what we were doing, and so he made the hole for the compass rose much larger than it should be. Now, I know you're keeping the compass rose. One of the things that happened was that once the compass rose was put in, there were several inches of grass left between the concrete and the edge of the compass rose. That's really why the edge of the compass rose has been destroyed. And hopefully, it can be put back together, but it's in a multitude of pieces. The city finally, well, the city initially, at the time, I don't think anybody was where they are now at the time, did say they were going to put concrete in or have the contractor do that. I followed up with the city many times, just never happened. Stone was put in there. In your pictures, you can't even see the stone any longer, it's all overgrown. So I'm raising this and making a point of it to say that when this is redone, which I think is great to do, please make sure that it is taken care of properly. It really should be surrounded by a solid surface. In addition to that, I do support.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Vince, do you understand what she's speaking about? I just want to make sure we understand what you mean.
I do, yeah.
Nicole, you do.
And actually, on the plan, I do have a ring of stained concrete. Once the granite, that's crumbled, once that's repaired into, you know, new granite pieces, I have stained concrete that'll go around it to solidify and make sure that it doesn't, you know, fall apart again.
And Ted and I have known.
And he's going to come out.
Nah.
It's a piece that's been there, and we've recognized, Nicole recognized that we wanted to save that and salvage it. So Ted, if I could get your assistance on maybe the detail to reestablish it and reconstruct, I'd be appreciative, because, you know, it's something that we don't do on a regular basis.
Yeah. And we've known Vince for over 20 years, a long time, and know you to be a trusted vendor, so we appreciate your promises. I also want to raise some concerns that I won't be, I won't repeat, I just want to say that I do support the concerns that have already been raised. I especially want to point out that kinetic sculptures, I'd be concerned if there isn't some sort of a wind rating or a governor put on those, because that wind is terrific. We have Anderson windows, too, and ours are bowing in. And the other concern I have is about the terraced seating being near the new concrete block walkway. I really like that it's going to be the concrete walk, but you mentioned the children. I've been there many times, and many people do bring their children there, and those terraced seats are just waiting for kids to climb up on them, and they're multiple levels, and they're right there at that concrete. So I would be concerned about that. I know that the purpose has been talked about as being a tranquil place, which it is and it can be. It's rare to have this kind of property right on the ocean for public use. People will want to continue to have weddings there, and I would think that the structure that's in the center, the gazebo, should be closer to the water, if possible, also because it would provide shade for getting a real water view. There isn't really any shade that would be provided on the seating that's out there now. So those would be the things that I'd bring up, in addition to the points about bolting things down, everything. The last thing I'll point out, she gave me permission to, Ruth Foley is sitting over here, she doesn't want to speak, but she, you may see her, she's been to City Hall many times. She faces the park as well, has raised many concerns about the maintenance of the park. That is our biggest concern, what will be different now to maintain it properly. And Ruth has had to call the police because of homeless people there. I'd be afraid if chaises are provided, that's a great sleeping place, so I would rethink, you know, just how much use those chaises would get, and if that would be inviting the activity that we really would rather not have. So those are the ends of my comments. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, sir?
I'm David King. We live at Two Harbor Cove, and most importantly, I want to say thank you. This park could really be so much more than it is today. I mean, it's a treasure. It's underutilized. When we first moved in 14 years ago, we used to stand out on our deck on the second floor and wave to the people in the weddings down the gazebo, and it was so much fun, it was a gorgeous place, and it just fell apart from lack of maintenance. I think your design is inspired, really brilliant. But I think there are some real concerns in terms of the trees. You know, when you look through the list of the trees, the one tree, there's more of than anyone else, can grow up to 100 feet high. I mean, that's crazy. It really is, I'm sorry. But a 100-foot tree in that park doesn't make sense, and beyond, you know, blocking the views, just think about the maintenance issues of those things. The wind is really, I wouldn't encourage you, you know this far better than any of us, to reconsider the wind issues. We're right there, we're right opposite there. I have a little deck out there with a screen-in porch, and the screen-in porch has been blown in twice. We have 60-pound chairs made of the polywood that get moved around by the wind on the fiberglass deck. We have a grill there that I've got two concrete blocks underneath it, inside of it, to hold it, to keep it from moving around. The wind is really staggering. I'm very concerned about what would happen with the kinetic sculptures over time because of that wind. The final thing was the comment that was made about the children and the walkway and the really brilliant, unique seating. I mean, it really is magnificent that you planned. Just be aware that we have a wonderful, wonderful place around the corner, Dry Dock, and all the children come down there in the middle of the summer after having their ice cream, down to the park. And if they're climbing on that, you've got rocks down just below it, and it's a real potential risk. And I would suggest that you reconsider or just look at that from a safety issue with children on it. But thank you, thank you, thank you from the bottom of my heart, all of you. This can be a treasure to this city, and we can't thank you enough for focusing on it.
Thank you, Mr. King. And just to repeat, we absolutely want to work with you in regards to trees, so we hear you loud and clear, and I think Nicole does as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Kathy Testa. I live at 1411 Harbor Lane, which is across the park from Dee. I just have some questions. What's the timing of finishing the construction? But first of all, I do want to also echo what everybody said. I am so excited to see something beautiful happening at the park, because we look out over it on all the decks in the house. But what is the timing on the project being finished?
So the game plan currently is to finalize the drawings within the next four to six weeks, go out to bid this fall, and hopefully have a six-month construction schedule of work, and open the park sometime in June of '26.
So opening June of '26 is the hope.
That's the hope. As long as we have a good winter.
Yes.
Bad winter, I can't guarantee anything.
Okay, thank you. I'm happy to hear about the lighting, because, like I said, we live right there, and the lighting that's currently along the railing by the water is so bright, it's, you know, you have, we have to shut the curtains at night when it's on. What's the timing of the lights? Because right now, they last, they stay on well into the evening. Are they going to be on all night long?
We have a photo cell or timer.
I don't know.
So we could adapt the lights for a photo cell or timer. We opted not to put lights along the walkway.
Along the railing where it is now? Yeah.
We looked at that and couldn't find a good source that would take away from the view there.
Yep.
Vince, could you grab the microphone, please?
Oh, sorry. So I know that, Nicole, we did do some undercarriage lights under that curval on your bench. We kind of thought that would kind of be a neat look. But one of the things, and Nicole even made a bollard that she has in the office to simulate what was there, so we were paying special attention to the bollard look, A, to eliminate any off-site glare, so that even when you looked at the light fixture itself, you wouldn't see a harsh glare. And a lot of people will look at a park, and while the light doesn't affect their living room, they look out and they see a harsh glare, and they take offense to it.
Yes.
So we were cognitive of that from the Kiwanis Park project, but we'll probably do both, have it on a timer and a photo cell, and as time goes on, we'll see what the city wants to do. So we'll have both options.
One of my main concerns is about those spotlights that you talked about, because they are the ones that we're going to be facing up, I imagine. And if you look at where they're located, I think Dee, you might have a concern about one of them. I think it's near your place. So again, the spotlights, I'm not sure they're going to be covered like you had mentioned. So anyway, please take that into consideration.
We will.
What's happening with the current trees? Are they being taken out?
Mostly.
Thank goodness. Okay. I agree with what everybody said regarding the number of trees, and I appreciate the fact that you said that you'll involve the community in that. But how will that work? Will you take comments and then take it under consideration and then do what?
Actually, I was going to take direction from the mayor, but my thought was to contact Dee, who I've known for 40 years, and for her to get her neighbors together and come out to the site and, you know, I know, the McKenneys, and I'll probably leave it to Dee to kind of rodeo all the neighbors in, and we'll come out, we'll take a look at it, and we'll have a discussion regarding it. I mean, I think that would be the best way to do it, to involve all the neighbors that want to be involved.
Okay. I also want to point out that when we first moved to the area, Harbor Lane was completely flat, there were no berms, and all there was, there might have been a few bushes, but for the most part, it was completely flat, and the maintenance crew took care of it because all they had to do was mow the lawn, and they're really good at doing that. And then, I think it was the nature center that put in all of the berms, am I right, Mary? Yeah. And it looked lovely for a time, but it immediately fell into disrepair. I mean, it was never weeded. We have pictures that we can show everybody. I took them yesterday, and somebody else took them as well, just showing just how invasive all of the weeds are. Maybe you don't have a budget yet for the maintenance, but like, what, do you plan on hiring like a professional landscape maintenance crew to pull the weeds and deal with, hopefully only bonsai trees, but we'll see. I don't know what, is there a plan? And if there isn't a plan, then I really do think that there should be. should be a plan before any construct, any construction gets started on this. Because I don't know what's going to be different now than when the nature center did all of the berms and planted all those trees.
Well, I could say that some of the things that we do as part of the construction, cut down on maintenance, we put vapor, weed barriers down, and things of that nature, to help with the sustainability. But like anything, it doesn't need to be, be maintained, and, you know, that's part of the city's goal is, you know,
Sure.
Once you have something new, I think it's a little easier sometimes to maintain, and especially when it, you know, starts out to be good. So, I think, I think the city will pay special attention to maintenance, as they are at Kiwanis Park, you know, that's now getting maintained. So, I think as we start to improve the parks, there'll be a little bit more maintenance consideration.
I hope so. And one last thing, I know that Ruthie was the one that mentioned this yesterday, and that is, to invite everybody here today to actually go to the park tomorrow or Thursday and experience the wind. I mean, the wind actually opens my, my doors, and so unless they're locked, they, the wind will just open them. So, it's really important, I think, especially for the, you know, landscape architects, to experience the wind firsthand. And tomorrow and Thursday, it's going to be quite bad. But, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the park?
I'm Stephanie Snyder from 1 Wilmington Avenue. I just had a few questions. Are the kinetic sculptures already commissioned?
Um, no.
No, okay. In a previous, proposed plan, preliminary drawing, it said the sculpture could include fixed permanent elements such as original sculptures, monuments, and memorials. Is that still true?
We, we have a spot for a local commissioned sculpture, so along the promenade, I have a four-foot by four-foot concrete pad there, and there'll be recessed lighting at that area, so that could be a piece that is permanent, but that was our local commissioned spot. So, we could find, it might be a rotational thing, I'm not really sure, you know, what the plan with that would be, but, um, yes, we, we still do, plan to incorporate the local commission piece.
Okay. And then, lastly, this might be more for city council and the mayor, would passing Resolution 254-08-2025 eliminate the possibility of the USS Jacob Jones Memorial being placed at Harborview Park?
I don't think it eliminates anything, really. I mean, the park could evolve over the years.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the public on Harborview Park? Okay, seeing that, we'll close public comment on Harborview Park. Council, any more questions on Harborview? I know we got two more topics, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, great job, Nicole.
Thank you.
Vince, you want to take it away on sidewalk, maybe?
And wish Nicole a happy birthday, tomorrow's her birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Nicole.
Happy birthday.
Maybe you can have a, you can blow out the birthday candles at Harborview Park tomorrow to check out that wind.
The wind.
For your birthday.
We're going to leave those exhibit boards with you, too, so you'll have them.
Yeah. Thank, thank you, Vince.
So, the next two projects aren't as sexy as Harborview Park, they're...
I think we're okay with that right now.
So, Patrick has been working on the sidewalk refurberation project, and so, we started probably in early summer, looking at the streets between, and, help me, Patrick, what were the streets?
Uh, we started off looking at Ocean Ave from Washington Street Mall all the way to Beach Avenue, and then we did the entirety of Columbia Avenue, as well as Virginia Avenue, from Col, or from Madison, excuse me, all the way over.
So, what the project entailed was to go out, do a visual analysis of what's there, and come up with a game plan of sidewalk and curb restoration, and keep it with the same type of elements. So, if there's slate there, we're going to reuse a new slate, if there's concrete, we'll do concrete, and so on and so on, brick. So, Patrick has done the study area, he's walked it, he ran it, he's, he's a local, he lives in West Cape May, so he's very familiar with it. So, he was able to go out and do a quantitative analysis of, of all the streets, and I'm going to let him describe what we, what we did and some of our findings, and the game plan would be is, once we had the approval this evening, we would go out to bid. I know that your manager is looking to contact all the residents, because there's going to be a sharing component to this with the residents, so that, I'm not sure where that component will be, but I know that the idea is to do a collaborative so that collectively, I think the city could do it much cheaper, and hopefully the public will buy into a cost sharing.
Thank you. Right, so, in, in trying to do the quantitative analysis, what we did is we went to each street and really just tried to find anything of obstacle, anything that could cause you to trip, anything for someone walking, if they weren't immediately looking at their feet, would cause some sort of impediment. And even more to that point, accessibility. A lot of the sidewalks that we were looking at, just due to the street trees and how old they are, have either deteriorated over time, they've been repaired, maybe not so much from an engineering standpoint, more so just to make sure that it's no longer deteriorating, and, and over time, that's really compounded on itself. So, on Ocean Street, as well as Columbia, the majority, I would say, are slate sidewalks, and, and in looking at that, we aren't looking to entirely replace the slate sidewalks, but as, as Vince was saying, more on an as-directed, and maybe even if we can reuse some of what's there, do that. And as far as the concrete would go, it'd be a full replacement. So, when we started going out, it was more for a scope, and it kind of grew. We started off with, like I said, the Ocean Avenue, Columbia Avenue, and Virginia Avenue, and we've even expanded, excuse me, we've even expanded to some sites away from those streets, where it was an extreme limit to accessibility. We have some sites on Maryland Avenue, Ohio Avenue, further in, even, even onto Beach Avenue.
I think a nice, a project of this nature allows the city to, you know, define a scope, but as we move along and, you know, depending on pricing, we'll be able to expand that up to 20% if we have some other geographic areas, but we thought that, you know, your direction from your city manager was, you know, let's keep it tight, let's keep it to a certain geographic area for now, and instead of do the whole city. So, this was our first phase, and I know there's probably subsequent phases that will occur over the years, but I think this is a, would be a good format, A, for the bidding purposes, and for the public. So, as people are looking, they know exactly what our plans are, what the square yardage is going to be, and we'll be able to tell with, you know, a definitive number to a person that's living in a street, you know, we're going to replace your curb, your sidewalk, your driveway, and it's going to cost $2,000. We'll have those numbers, there won't be any guessing, and your fair share is X. So, again, it, this was, is, instead of doing a project as, where needed directed, because that could get into a lot of different scopes, that's why we wanted to define the areas specifically, so that if somebody's bidding it, is going to be able to go out and see exactly what the scope of work is, and I think accordingly, we'll get a better price.
Vince, excuse me, will you be notifying the property owners prior to going out, to let them know that they have been assessed and potentially?
I'll let Mr. Deekers answer that.
Yeah, Paul?
Yeah, the, the hope is, once council authorizes this project, we'll, we'll start sending out the notices to the property owners, identifying how much quantity that they have on their property that we're looking to replace, and then, based on an engineer's estimate, estimate what the price would be at this point, so that they kind of are aware of what we're looking at, and then, when the project would come out and be, before, as we would award it, we then re-contact the, the property owners and say, okay, we got the bids in, and this is the cost, and this is the, your share of that cost. Similar to what we've been doing with, the Shade Tree Commission's been doing the 50/50 program, we were looking at a 20% to 30% kind of a cost share with the property owner to share in that cost.
And if necessary, they could make some accommodations?
We were looking at, you know, you know, obviously,
Just want to make sure that we're not...
We would be able to put them on a, you know, a, kind of like a payment plan.
Okay.
You can't pay it all right now, but you can pay over five years, or, you know, we'll work on
Okay.
that ultimate plan, but that's, that would be the intent, not to come out and say, oh, you owe us this next month, but look at a phased-in program so that they can pay for it over a couple of years.
But essentially, this plan is to save everybody money in the bigger picture.
Yes.
That's exactly it. That's exactly it. And I think the big thing is to increase public safety, because the homeowners may or may not be aware that they're responsible for that sidewalk. If I'm walking down the sidewalk, and I had a couple of beers, and I trip and get hurt, they're responsible, not the city, so...
And, and 100% responsible for replacement, unless there's a shade tree, and then there's 50/50.
Exactly. So, I think this project is, I, I, hopefully, well-received by the community, because, you know, the city's being proactive to avoid any problems for you in the future, so...
I, I don't see Virginia on there, but you mentioned that.
So, that, we just got to the first sheet, so
Oh, I'm s-
Each of those plan sheets have a different, so there's not as much, like, when you saw Columbia Avenue, it was, there was a lot of slate in there, so you saw that, but here on Virginia Avenue, there's not as much as, as
Okay.
when they went down Virginia.
Mm-hmm.
And then, here's Virginia at Pittsburgh. So, we, you know, we essentially tried to create a corridor from one end of town to the other end of town, and then Shade Tree has been, I'll say, this year, as they've been getting in the requests, we'll be adding those, we've added those also to the project as like an if-and-where directed, and so, to add them to the, the list. And as Vince said, the hope is, I think, if you recall last year, the council budgeted $600,000 for sidewalk replacements. I, I don't think that this, this work is going to quite total up to $600,000, but we needed to figure out a scope of what we could do, and then, the anticipation is, once this was done, and once we had a good feel for how these are going to be contracted, how the contractors are going to look at that, that, that we'll start looking at other areas within the city and kind of create court, I think we want to work on creating corridors, you know, of, you know, and we're going to start in areas where people are walking more, and then work our way
That's exactly it.
throughout the city that way.
Right.
And then, these are the areas, I mean, specifically Columbia and Ocean.
Exactly.
Those are, those are-
With more tourists, there's more people walking around, and even just with more people being here, they tend to explore out from the mall a little more, and
Right.
this is the immediate area that that's taking place now. So,
Yeah.
the, a little bit most necessary, but also the most needed to be addressed.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Can you get into, before you get out of the slate discussion, we've obviously had this discussion, so, but I want the public to hear a little bit. Most people recognize the Historic Preservation Commission requires that you keep the slate, which we totally understand. And actually, if, if you look up the cost of slate today, it's like, when you get a cost estimate for your slate or marble countertop, it, it's not very different for outside. It's very expensive. However, the replacement that homeowners have done over the years, really, I would say, is lacking in a lot of locations. I mean, obviously, people who walk Columbia Avenue know, a lot of it is just basically on top of, you know,
The dirt.
tampered-down sand, or, or just dirt. What, what Patrick is talking about is actually putting down basically a concrete base first, and then laying the slate onto it. So, essentially, creating almost a concrete sidewalk with the slate on top of it, essentially, to some degree.
Something that would be a little bit more sustainable
Yeah.
in time.
Yeah.
Correct.
And, and what happens, you know, people don't want to get rid of the old slate, so they're bringing it up, and they're, you know, one piece now becomes four pieces, and...
Right, right.
You know, so, we are going to try to reuse as much as practical.
Right.
You know, obviously, it, it'll be a challenge, but I think having the details that we have, and having this in that geographic area, is going to bring a better price because of the, the amount of quantity. Because you call some, like you said, Mary, if you call somebody just to do 40 square feet or 80 square feet, it's going to be a big number, but if they're doing 400 square feet,
Right.
it's going to be a little bit better. It'll be a little bit more cost savings.
Yeah.
It's all about mobility, too.
Yeah.
People, get them down here. Once they're here, they can do the work.
Exactly.
Patrick, we interrupted you, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's, that's quite all right. I was kind of just going to reiterate what you and Vince both said with the slate. I think with the areas that we determined actually need repair, our, our goal was to take that specific area, and even if, you know, next to a broken piece there isn't, there's a piece that doesn't need repair, on that entire stretch, we take everything up. What can be reused, we will, will be reused, what needs to be replaced will be replaced, but, again, there will be a concrete base, maybe some sort of leveling sand, and then, on top of the slate. So, the appearance would be the same, but in terms of durability over time, and especially people driving over it, and say, in driveways, it'll, it'll extend the life greatly.
Great.
Well, that's all we have of that one.
Okay, any, any questions, council? Okay, move right on to Tennis Club?
I'll kind of give the preamble. So, the, the city was successful, as I'm sure you're aware, to receive two ADA grants for handicap accessibility for that section of town. Now, one of the things that we wanted to, to accomplish here is kind of tie the Madison Avenue sidewalk through Kiwanis Park into the Tennis Club. So, the idea is to create a contiguous walkway from, well, Madison and, of course, other locations, but through the Kiwanis Park, down through the Fizbuck Estate, and back out to Washington. We also have part of this, the renovation of the bathrooms there, or the, I shouldn't say renovation, actually, the inclusion of a handicap bathroom for the Tennis Club, and handicap ramp into a patio area that the club currently utilizes.
Vince, can I just add, for those who don't know, in the public, the city of Cape May owns the Tennis Club. That, that's why one of the important portions of adding the handicap restroom.
Exactly. So, Patrick's job here was, all right, how are we going to figure out the route, and, and what is the methodology to do this, and after a number of site visits, and working along with your city manager, who happens to be an engineer who understands these things, we came up with a plan. I'll let Patrick kind of describe to you what our intent is.
And if I could just jump in right before that, Vince. We also met with the Tennis Club, and with the MAC regarding the Fizbuck Estate, and, and really walked these routes with them, so, you know, they, they have kind of their buy-in, and, and they've said, yeah, this is the best way to traverse through the site. So, it has been, you know, we've been working hand-in-hand with both of those organizations to create this ADA access. And we may, because of the bathroom, we may do it in two phases. We may do the sidewalk and the access to the pro shop and that, the gazebo on the Tennis Club as one project, and because it's a building with a restroom, it might be better to bid that separately than from a concrete sidewalk project, and that would be kind of a separate thing. thing. And also, remember, we got this, we received, the city received two grants from the DCA's Small Cities Grant to construct this project, so that's, we're essentially using grant funding for this project, as long as a city, a 10% city match.
That's great.
All right, so, again, just to reiterate, really, the goal of the pathway is just to connect everything, connect the new Kiwanis Park with the entirety of the Tennis Club, and in working with the members of the Tennis Club, one of their biggest concerns, as is around town, parking. So that kind of led to the current layout that you see for the path, where it connects with the sidewalk coming out of Kiwanis Club, where this little roundabout is, it'll go down and buffer just by a few feet along these southernmost tennis courts. All the way over here, there, you can see a little bump up, there's a couple storage sheds that are currently there, we'll go around those, come back down, almost all the way over to where the trolleys are kept, and then make our way up all the way to the sidewalk here, where there's also, I believe, ADA crosswalk. And so, in staying down here, I don't know if anybody's ever been to the Tennis Club in the morning, it's packed. It's packed, beyond packed. You can't turn around, you can hardly even park, and so, what we're trying to do here is remain the turn, keep the turnaround, and, excuse me, keep as much possible parking as we can along the bottom. The changes that have come about really have all been from the parking. We have a couple possible pathways to connect the actual pro shop to this walkway, but, but really, it's, it's just been the parking.
I think it's a really good, how you have it running right along the fence, still can have parking there on the other side, but it obviously makes it ADA accessible. And when this is completed, I actually wanted to see, included as part of the project, a sign on Washington, just directing people. I think we really need to come up with the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee, some, you know, uniform signage for safe routes, you know, safe, you know, get off of Washington Street and take this sidewalk to.
Absolutely.
Connect her to Madison, you know?
Absolutely.
And even for bicycles, which we don't want on the sidewalk itself, but, you know, going through there rather than going on Washington Street is definitely a safer route to go. So it'd be nice if we could include some type of small signage, nothing big, because I'm sure MAC doesn't want a big, you know, but, hey, safe route this way to Madison, you know, to get off of Washington.
Don't they have one over on Elmira?
They do.
Yeah, which tells you, yeah, to go back to.
Plots go right.
Yeah.
Down Venice.
And even in add-on to that, keeping people off of Lafayette as well.
Exactly.
To Washington.
Exactly.
And then to here.
And to follow up on the, on the mayor's remarks, as Kiwanis Park has become more established in, in people's minds as an area to go, people have been cutting the corner and going through Kiwanis Park and going that way.
Right.
So, which is, first off, that's making the route shorter, it is making the route safer, but people are kind of learning on their own, so if we can do something to promote that more and utilize that, and this provides a great pathway as well. It's safer, obviously, navigating through there as well.
Right.
Because we do have traffic going through there, foot traffic, bike traffic, and as you, as you mentioned, a lot of car traffic as well.
Right.
So, knowing that it just forces the foot traffic in a certain, certain way is, is really good for us.
And even just to do encourage more foot traffic, I mean, there's, like you said, people are cutting across the grass, but some people may not want to do that, and they may take their car over to the Tennis Club to park for lessons, and this might lessen that.
That's great. Any other questions?
I have a question for city council.
Sure.
And this has been brought up to me a number of times this summer. The question is, when are we going to put the striping in for that crosswalk on Washington Street? Because I think we should do that as a priority.
Shane, that's one of our discussion items. Go ahead.
So, because when council, when we delayed installing the crosswalks, when we were having the discussion about the brick crosswalks on, on the whole street of Washington, the contractor kind of, I'll say, demobilized their striping contractor, and that contractor's had a difficult time re-engaging with their striping contractor to complete that. The city still hold, is holding his, you know, that project money as well as his, you know, retainage for it, so, you know, he had asked to kind of close that project out, and we said, I need you to finish that striping. So, there's about six crosswalks from essentially Jefferson down to Sidney that need to be installed. The one being here at Skellinger is, is included in that, yes.
Okay.
So we've been, myself, Eric at Public Works, the project engineer, we've all been calling the contractor to try to get him to do that, so.
Councilman Meyer, I actually made the phone call last week, too, just to personally hear from the contractor, and he guaranteed within the next few weeks. I said, school's coming up soon, and he said, I hear you, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's all we have, mayor, other than I just, you know, one of the other projects that we just finished, and I want to give a little accolade to the call again, was Franklin Street project was our project, and I think the, I know I'm really happy with the outcome there, I really think that became really a focal for the community there, so.
Really beautiful.
That's, you know, she did a nice job there.
Thank you.
Yeah, beautiful. All right, guys, well, thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
And so the public should know, if, if the council moves forward, these three projects are on for, on the consent agenda to authorize Vince to go out to bid for these. Obviously, with Harborview Park, we're going to have to revisit some of the landscaping before we finalize and put it out, but I will start putting these project documents up on the city's website, so the public can have a full review of these plans, and be more fully aware of the, the schedule and stuff like that. So I'll, I'll get that up on the website following this meeting, as long as the projects get approved.
And I'll, I'll take the time to go out and reach out to Dee Lanzalotti, and maybe a small community, maybe Deputy Mayor McDade, they'll go meet with them and see what they want. I think that's the best way to handle it here, would have been time-consuming, and.
No, absolutely agree. I think it's all good feedback, obviously, they live there, you know, they're in close proximity, so let's get their input, and, you know, I trust Nicole's judgment on what we can put in there that is not going to be.
So we won't grow 100 feet here.
Yeah.
So you know.
And, and we'll, you know, be able to be easily maintained and not over some, overly burdensome, so I'm more than happy to participate.
There's a compromise there, and you know.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, that's the least of our issues.
Yeah, absolutely.
Nicole, can, just on that, when you come to a closer-to-final decision on that, would you just make sure that Mr. Meyer's involved, too, for, just to, there's already been approval, but.
If you do have that meeting, just let me know, I'll have my main Shade Tree guy go out there.
Perfect.
He's our tree expert, and he'll just be part of the conversation, not necessarily force in any direction.
If we could pull environmental in on that, environmental commission in on that as well, it's, like to be able to have an opportunity to review that.
Well, maybe also at the end, Nicole, put together the summary list, what was planned, and what has now been changed, and will be part of the proposed, so that it's a part of the record for Shade Tree and environmental, that way, just in case we miss anybody, but, you know, any of the documented changes.
Okay.
What got switched out.
Thank you.
That way we call.
On all that, I would appreciate if we could put it together sooner than later, because as you know, being a six-month project, every month on this end is going to help us on the July end, so I don't, yeah, we all know.
One of the.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll be, I'll reach out for Dee, and maybe you schedule something for next week, maybe during the day.
That's great.
You know, and.
And Nicole, I think you heard loud and clear, so you probably already have some ideas.
I do, yes.
Yeah, I'm sure, so.
Yeah.
Great.
Patrick, Nicole, Vince, thank you very much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, please, I'm sorry, sorry about that.
Well, not a question really for you, it's, I think it's more for our attorney and manager. With the, the ADA at the Tennis Club, since I think it's a great idea that you're putting it out into, similar to what we did at Kiwanis Park, just because of the concern about the bids coming in at a better price, and it makes sense, but with us doing it into possibly, you know, a phase-one and a phase-two, is it okay that we put it out, or that we have it the way it is on the agenda currently?
Yes, yeah.
It is, okay.
And, and that's just going to authorize us to do that portion.
Just to.
So when we get the bathroom portion ready, that'll come back to council, you'll see that phase of that project, and reauthorize that to go out to bid separately.
Okay, so we'll reauthorize it, okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that at a separate time.
Okay.
We did have a concern, and Mark Blower, your grant coordinator, did confirm with DCA that we could do the project together and bifurcate the bathroom out.
Because that's going to go in that old shed, or that.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, and you're still able to get that walkway through there? I know that there's a lot of concern about that. I play tennis there.
We're working, we're working with the Tennis Club on, on that issue.
Vegetation has to come out, that's the.
That's the big one.
Yeah.
You know, but, you know, can't have it both ways, and that's, you know.
It is very, yeah.
Well, no, it's, it's plenty wide to meet that, but what, what it's going to involve is, the Tennis Club is going to have to spend some of their dollars to replace the fencing. Really, that's become, because if you, if you really get down and start looking at it, that fencing is old, and it really needs, that needs a refresh, and then also, if you take out the landscaping, that kind of creates that visual barrier between the two tennis courts, then you got to put some screening on the fencing to kind of create that visual barrier for the, the play of the tennis.
We think the fabric is going to be a much better alternative than that landscaping.
I agree, I, yeah, I agree. Are there, is there any irrigation that runs under there?
We have no idea.
Okay.
I don't think so.
Okay, because it's going to, it's going to do something to some of those clay quartz there as well, so there'll be some rehab there, too. Yeah, okay, I knew that was a concern. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, thank you all very much, thank you. Okay, with that, we have updates on old business. City manager, any updates?
Just a few. First, I wanted to just give an update on the recycling, residential recycling and commercial recycling collection. I'm happy to report, as of now, all of our businesses, commercial properties, multifamily properties, and residential properties are in general conformance with the limits that council established with that revised ordinance. You know, Public Works has done a good job at the public outreach. I've helped out on just a very few minor occasions to try to work through some issues, but, you know, I think everybody has done a good job at adapting and understanding the need for, you know, some, some limits, so it's gone through really well, and, you know, everybody's, at this point, abiding from their controls. We're still doing some outreach generally on, on part of our recycling ordinance that was in existence prior to this one, so it had nothing to do with this new ordinance as far as putting recycling out too early, and proper containers, and lids, and all those other recycling collection items, but it's, that's going to be a phase-in thing, and that's just kind of their next step as far as their outreach. But I just wanted to say, we, we had a good outreach so far, and.
Just, real quick, yeah, that's good news. I haven't really heard too much, and from the bid, it's been good.
Right.
We, when we originally put this ordinance together, we were talking about having a report, and I just want to.
So, so come.
It's not over November.
I've been working with, Eric has been collecting the data, and, and going to have a report by this, but, I mean, at this point, everybody's in compliance, so that was the, the positive thing that, you know, that we'll be able to show, but I just, but yeah, he, we know that we're going to have to, in the fall, after the summertime, to come up with a report to show just how, you know, what, how, how, the amounts that we were collecting in the beginning, and how they've diminished, and how now how they're meeting the ordinance requirements.
Okay.
The next thing I just wanted to talk to, they've been working with mercantile licenses, I think we're just down to a handful of leftovers, I'll say from our, our mercantile list, it's a handful, it's a handful, however, we've now inputted that mercantile list into our rentalscape program, and we got an initial report back from them, 900 possible properties that are in violation, that are out there on the rental market and not in violation. Now, I'm going to assume there's probably going to be some duplications of some of those properties, and, you know, maybe some that have gotten a mercantile that were there, but it's still going to, it's, I think, you know, so we're now, I'm just reporting that to council, and now we're kind of going to be printing out that list, I'm going to be working with the clerk's office and code enforcement, and we're now going to move into the enforcement end of the short-term rental program, but I just wanted to give counsel, that's kind of where we, where we're at right now, and, you know, obviously, the rentalscape program has a very good database and very good ability to show that they've been renting not only this year, but in 2024.
2018.
Back to almost 2018, so.
It's a very robust program.
You know, so if we get somebody saying, oh, that's not me, or that, we've got pictures, we've got the whole thing, and we will be starting that enforcement here over the next couple of weeks. And then, finally, I just wanted, you know, the, the city and the entire OEM team and Public Works has been prepping, having update meetings on the impending Cape May City Clerk Hurricane that is out in the ocean right now, that's coming up the coast. The beaches were closed today for bathing. The beaches, you know, the beaches aren't closed, that if you still wanted to walk the ADA path, and, you know, we're not preventing people from being out on the beach, but you definitely should not be in the water, you know, now through Thursday, or until the lifeguard reopens the beaches as far as bathing, so.
So.
I just can't reiterate that.
Yeah, we have another call scheduled for tomorrow.
Right.
It's Thursday supposed to be the real day, you know, the last, today and tomorrow are also, but Thursday's very troublesome with regard to sort of the, the current and the riptide.
Right.
We, we put up on the convention hall marquee messaging for people to know there, so that they could see that, in addition to, Harry did put out signs at each of the beach entrances, so there'll be another update at, at 2:00 tomorrow afternoon, yeah, so OEM will get back together tomorrow afternoon or two.
And lifeguard will be, you know, patrolling and manning the beaches, and just directing people to, to not enter the, the ocean, and, you know, you may think it's fun to go out there and try to, to do it in the storm, but please, you know, you need to be safe, and just stay out of the water for now until it's safe to get back in there, so can't caution people enough about that. And with that, I just also want to reiterate, because, you know, our next meeting is essentially the Wednesday after Labor Day, that, that week of Labor Day, we're going to have several of our construction projects will be starting back up, you know, we're going to have the rehabilitation of the promenade will be restarting, we have our water sewer project, which they'll be starting on Illinois Avenue, so just to be, you know, as we move into, as the end of the official part of the summer ends, so does our contractors, home construction starts to ramp up because piling and demolition can now begin, so you're going to see more activity on that front, so just, just be aware of that and be cautious, so thank you.
Thank you, city manager, city solicitor?
I just have, just a heads-up to council that there was a discussion last night at the HPC meeting, and there's, there's two policy initiatives that there, that were discussed, and they're going to be recommending to council that you take up for consideration, and I'll get council more detail on this for you all to consider, but I just wanted to preview it, because it was discussed last night. One is sort of a preventative item in the historic district that many towns with significant historic resources have, such as New Orleans, which is a demolition-by-neglect ordinance, just provides some options in those rare cases where historic properties in the historic district fall into disrepair, it may be a portion of the property, it may be the entire thing, it just provides some options, clear, you know, roadmap for the city to engage with the property owner and take some action, whether it's preventative, or just from an enforcement standpoint, getting that conversation going. So that's one, and I'll, I have sort of an outline of a proposal for an ordinance that council may consider. The second thing is a little bit more straightforward and more on the proactive side of things, public-facing. We have three certificates that are issued when property changes hands in the city of Cape May. It's this certificate of flood compliance, fire inspection, and then certificate of zoning compliance. Very straightforward certificate, if you look at it, it's one page, you know, big, bold-faced. face indicating, you know, your property's either in conformance with the zoning code or not. And the, the idea is, and everybody knows that ignorance of the law is not a defense. If you don't know, oh, I didn't know I was in a historic district, doesn't mean you can do whatever you want. Everybody knows that. But in order to get ahead of that and sort of get the HPC's goals and missions out front, it's been recommended that information about the historic district be included on the zoning certificate that's issued in connection with closing so that when somebody gets that at closing, you say, oh, I'm in, you know, I have a multifamily property in X location. It would also simply indicate, are you in the historic, local historic district, yes or no? What kind of property is a key contributing, non-contributing? And then just FYI about the code sections that are applicable. So it's, it's more of like a PSA when, when you go to closing in addition to the zoning information and something that could probably very efficiently be rolled into an existing certificate process that we already have.
Um, I'm sorry.
And, and that process, because our zoning officer is also our HPC compliance officer, you know, that, that's probably the best tie to tie them together because he, he sees on both ends and he'll be able to kind of issue that and, and state that right as part of his zoning compliance.
I actually, I believe the, another district that, because it has such a unique set of zoning requirements, the R4 could benefit from consideration of something like this. There are many times that I think Bruce has gone out when he's doing these and pointing out to the sellers of properties that they have, they're not in conformance with some of the zoning guidelines. I just put it out there as a point. You know, you have people who have rehabbed upstairs attic spaces as living accommodations that, you know, aren't, that go on there because of the different housing type, singles, twins and quads that, I don't know. I would say, talk to Bruce if he sees any applicability there. I think it might be beneficial, but I know it's not along the same lines, but as Mr. Hurles often says, that the R4 has the most restrictive zoning guidelines in the city, so I'm sure outside the HPC. Just put it out there for consideration.
Like, it might come as a surprise to some people that pools aren't permitted in the R4. And all of a sudden, that's some form of surprise when it's, you know, there's no secret about that in the city code. But that, that kind of spirit is what the HPC was looking at, is just kind of getting ahead of that, that sentiment and just saying, here's the information. So anyway, I'm going to circulate draft ordinances to council for council's consideration and then invite your comments offline and we can potentially consider, you know, that at an upcoming meeting.
There was one thing that came up at the meeting yesterday, you know, what zone, we just did the, the initial historic zone, so there are certain things that the council might want to consider, you know, adding, subtracting, whatever, so. And then also, kind of to piggyback with what you said as far as the, going to closing, you know, are you a key contributing or you're not, the HPC is going to develop a, kind of like a brochure. It's going to be an easier, easier read for somebody than most of the legal things that come at closing.
And that would be updated, should there be more inclusion of a property within the historic district? I know that times they've expanded upon.
The, the idea of that, what, what councilwoman Baldwin's referencing is, the ordinance proposes amending this zoning certificate, which is a one-page clinical-looking, you're diagnosed with whatever zone and it's HPC or not. The HPC is also considering more of a friendlier, fluffier letter explaining kind of, you know, the HPC's view on, instead of condolences, you're in the HPC, more of a congratulations letter. So, that.
Well, that would be a twist.
The, the discussion that I had last night with the HPC was, that is perhaps something that we don't need to legislate, but that they can develop from a policy standpoint because it may change over the years, but it's something that can probably be coupled with the delivery of the zoning certi, the formal zoning certificate.
Which, which you could probably piggyback, that same type of a letter, you could almost create an R4, welcome to the R4 and have that similar handout that would go with that and just say, hey.
I think it would be very helpful.
Welcome to the R4 district, this is, this is what you just bought.
Where accessory structures are able to be located, what you're permitted to do, what you're not.
This is what your real estate agent forgot to tell you.
Do you have parking or not?
And as the tree hugger in this group, I think there's a, an option for, you know, we just had a person come to our board the other day saying that he lives in another state and he didn't know he couldn't cut his tree down, even though he had two dozen pictures of it before he cut it down. I think it's important for people to know that they can't be trimming street trees and they can't be taking down the personal trees because it will be a financial effect to them. That's all. Just a thought.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else, city solicitor?
That's it.
City council, any updates or old business? No? Seeing none? We can move to ordinances for introduction? Ordinance for introduction?
Single, yeah. We have 576, 2025, an ordinance amending chapter 525 of the zoning code to promote workforce and long-term housing opportunities in the C1 zoning district for introduction.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions or comments, council?
This is great.
Okay.
About time we made this move.
Any other comments?
Yeah. I'll make a few comments. I know that typically we, we send ordinances to the planning board for the master plan to make sure it's.
Consistency.
Yeah, consistent with the master plan. And that's in our code. And I think that if we could hold this up for 35 days instead of having them come back to us and have something maybe substantially reviewed, I'm concerned because the C1 district at this point is actually more than just the mall. I also know that there are, I know of two current properties in the C1 district that are deed restricted. So a deed restriction would supersede this ordinance. I just, I just want to make sure that we have everything kind of covered and I don't think this is a real rush to push this today. I think that we can, you know.
There is some priority because, I'll look at Maureen.
Okay. Can I just respond back? So it specifically states in the ordinance that this was something that came out of the master plan that was ratified by the planning board back in 2019. And the language there talks to, I mean, this is language right out of the master plan. So the planning board has considered this. They considered it in 2019 and have, most recently have had discussions specific to this issue. Now, in talking with Mr. Hurles this afternoon, you know, I said, you know, are you concerned? And he said, Maureen, this is following protocol and procedure. It will come back to the planning board and at that time, if they want to make any revisions to what is being proposed, we would do so at that meeting and then it would come back to council with the modified or revised language. So, I mean, I believe that the, the way this is laid out, it is finally something that was in the master plan in 2019. We're acting upon it. The planning board will have the capability to be able to discuss it, debate it, revise it before it comes back for second reading and adoption. So this is just an introduction to us. Are we, you know, sort of, you know, supporting this, the concept? Now, whether or not it's the C1 and whether or not it's just certain locations within the C1, I think the planning board can make, make those recommendations back to us without changing the spirit of what we're trying to, to do here, which I, I think is finally supporting an effort that we all recognize and talk about, about the need for workforce housing. So I, I don't think having, I mean, this process that we're following is absolutely.
Can I ask the solicitor about that? Can you comment on the process?
So, this, the process is laid out in the ordinance that before we do a final adoption on second reading, we want to make sure that this goes to the planning board and it's reviewed for master plan consistency, which if you adopted it on first reading in Senate, it certainly would. We've gotten into the habit of not even beginning that process before we send a draft concept to them. They send us our comments and then we zip through first and second reading. You can do it either way. There's nothing wrong with it, there's nothing illegal about it. The important thing is that by the time we get to second reading and we adopt this, that at some point, the planning board has reviewed for master plan consistency before that point. We've just gotten into the habit of doing it for efficiency's sake, to make sure that we're not like volleying this back and forth and editing it and republishing and all that stuff. So I think that's a good practice, but I don't have a problem with this being presented tonight because it is so tailored to a recommendation they've already put in writing almost eight years ago or whatever it was. So we're really reacting to something they've already indicated as a priority from a master plan standpoint. So it's not like completely coming out of the blue as like some concept council dreamed up. This is in reaction to something that's in the master plan reexamination report.
Mr. Dietrich, you were going to say something.
I mean, I think that when you look at, anytime you change an ordinance, you, you always have a potential to have an existing use that maybe, that this proposed use would make that non-conforming, so that, if, as long as, if they exist and they can document that they exist today. So we, you know, we have, I think Aaron went through and identified several properties within the C1 district that, that would fit this, an apartment over retail that exists today. They would be able to continue infinitum as long as they don't change what they're doing because they'd just be classified as an existing non-conforming use and would be able to remain.
I'm, I'm not opposed to the ordinance. I'm just, I'm just wondering, are we jumping the gun? I think we might be a little bit. It's only 35 days. And at this point, since 2000 and what, 19, when the master plan was written, till now, nothing was done. Let's wait another 35 days. Let, let's come back clean and take a look at some of the issues that, you know, you know, as far as, you know, solicitor, I don't know, you know, I, I'm pretty sure, I looked it up, I'm pretty sure a deed restriction overrides an ordinance.
In terms of how?
There's, there, there was a, there was an applicant that came in that was in the C1 district that, actually, it's two owners, that there was a deed restriction on the, on the second floor use, that it could never be used as apartments. And this is in the district, so that would change this. And that's what I want the planning board to look at, to see.
But apartment, but apartments are already permitted in the C1 district, so really, all you're doing is changing the, how the apartment would be utilized, how the apartment would be utilized.
Correct.
The future, not exist, anything existing.
Yeah, just to be clear, for anybody listening that's not at this table.
And that's why I said what I said.
Yeah, it's important to highlight that because this can get out of control really quickly. This is a proposed permitted use change to encourage workforce and long-term housing. If you have a current lawfully operated mercantile licensed apartment.
Correct.
This is not going to change that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? But the minute you start making changes to the building, oh, I want to change everything around inside, oh, but I want to put an apartment, well then, that's when this type of thing comes in prospectively. And anybody that's not using any of that space above and it's not operated that way would have the opportunity to turn to this and say, hey, you know, and I'd like to start utilizing that. But we're not, we're not looking backward at people that have lawfully existing uses right now. So the timing of this is really up to council. It doesn't make really, I don't, I als, I don't see the emergency. I also don't see necessarily a reason to wait on this either because we've already brought in Mr. Hurles to review this before this was brought to council tonight. He's not a voting member of the planning board, but he's the engineer and he's going to, he's going to be part of that, essential part of that review of the master plan consistency. So we're trying to get ahead of that.
It actually did come out of the planning board conversation.
It was a, I went back and watched it. It was very general. It was, you know, kind of, hey, let's really not talk about it, you know.
Okay.
At, you know, at the point that they were trying to.
I will tell you that we probably end up about the same timeline if you send it first and then we do first and second reading without it in the middle.
Why you say 35 days? What's, is that the next meeting and then the army?
No, that's, that's the, that's in statute where we would send it to the planning board. They would have 35 days to review it and send it back to us with their consistency with the master.
I mean, it's on their, it's on their agenda for their next meeting on the 26th.
So it wouldn't even necessarily be 35 days because they're going to consider it.
That's what I'm saying. Whatever way we do this, it's not going to really change the timeline. Just as long as they review it in a timely manner, that's all that matters. If they review it first and they say, okeydoke, this looks great, then we just go around, go back here and we can do first and second reading without having, having to wait, you know, we can just.
So I'm, I just personally, I'm fine with that. I guess we would make a motion to table this evening, is that the idea?
I, I would make, you, you could make a motion to refer this draft ordinance to the planning board for master plan consistency review prior to, to, prior to introducing on first reading.
Okay. Before we do that, is there any other comments or questions on this from council?
The only reason I'm, because the C1 district is way beyond the Washington Street Mall and I want us to really consider that. I'd like to have the planning board look at that. Some of those uses have changed as well in that C1 district, so I want, I, I really like the planning board to, and it might take, you know, that, that full 35 days for them to come back to us and two of you sit on the, sit on that board, so I, I, you know, I really think that we weigh a lot, we weigh pretty heavily on what the planning board says.
Sure. Okay.
Okay.
Want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we table this.
Do I have a second? Not to table, to.
Or to.
To refer to.
Yes, to refer to the planning.
You're not, you're not going to be voting to introduce tonight, you'd like to move to refer it to the planning, the draft ordinance for master plan consistency review before the planning board.
I'll second that. I have a question.
Go for it.
What if they gave us some other recommendations that's not related to the master plan?
Then we can consider that and potentially include them in the introduction.
So whether it's consistent with the master plan or not, and if it's recommendation from the planning board, we can act on it.
Yeah, yeah, you can, and they typically do send in FYI comments that are not related to the master plan. And that's okay. We can, then we'd have an opportunity to consider that before we get to second reading. We could do it at the, out the gate at first reading. That's why I'm saying the timing at this point is probably not going to make a difference.
Because there, there are a lot of parking issues in that master plan, so even taking a look at that, I.
Including today.
Well, I mean, that, that, that would undertake a much different, so I would not want to tie that one, one of those up with this.
But you're looking for general consistency of the master plan and, and looking at the C1 district.
But that's, that's a separate discussion that's underway with another member of the planning board, so.
Okay, so we have, just a, I'm sorry, Mr. Solicitor, but a, a point of clarification. We had an, we had a motion and a second to introduce. Do we need to do anything with that?
Whoever made the motion can.
I'll rescind my motion.
Rescind the motion.
It was Deputy Mayor McDade.
Oh.
Deputy Mayor, do you?
I'll rescind the motion.
Okay, so we, we rescind the motion and then we have a second motion from Councilwoman Baldwin, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Seconded in by Mr. Meyer. So we, we have a motion and a second to send this to the planning board, correct?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Malak?
Yes. Okay, we appreciate that and we appreciate the planning board giving us their recommendation. Onto public portion on resolutions this almost evening. Anyone here wishing to speak on resolutions this evening? Mr. Roush?
Charles Roush, 1010 New York Avenue. I've, I'd like to kind of review and I'd like to thank Mr. Haney for an update on, on the, the debt that the city has. My questions are relevant to, to, to the debt structure. And correct me if I'm, am I wrong, but according to the audit, we've got $44 million in net long-term debt. And, but I believe that number has changed now as a result of the information that I got this evening. So we're down to, I believe that's 36.8, 8 million. And our debt, as I think everyone knows, our debt is really structured based upon a state regulation of 3.5% of our, our actual value of our real estate, which, which amounts to 4.9 billion dollars. That's how we arrive at a number that we could have 171 million dollars of total debt. And the unusual thing is that our assessed value from real estate tax standpoint is, is a little over 3 billion dollars and that's where we come in with this revaluation, which will probably take place in the next couple of years. But correct me if I'm wrong, that if, if the, the audit number was 44 million, there was also an authorized 13.3 million that was authorized and not issued. This evening, you're going to be considering two resolutions, number 260 and number 261, and in. And in 61, you've got actually two amounts. Resolution 260 refers to 8.7 million, and 261 refers to 2 million plus a $7 million bond anticipation note authorization. Or those two amount to 35.7 million. My question, a couple of questions. Between the, the three amounts this evening that you're going to be considering, are any of those part of what has been authorized but not issued?
Yes, anytime we do a bond ordinance that gets adopted, it automatically goes to authorized but not issued, because that is us authorizing to go out for debt, just not issuing it yet. And then when we do an actual bond ordinance, it just moves from authorized but not issued to issued.
Do you know about what, how much of the not issued, in effect, will be canceled by, by authorization of approving a bond tonight?
Um, it, it would be a one-for-one. So, if we're doing a $20 million bond sale, anything that's authorized but not issued, it would be that same amount that moves over. Because everything has to be authorized through a bond ordinance before it can go to a bond sale.
Okay, so theoretically, the 13 is not gonna be, is not gonna even become relevant again.
Correct, yep.
So, the 35.7 million that you're going to be considering this evening, and you add to that the current adjusted number, which I received tonight, of 36 million, you're looking at a significant long-term debt proposal, which goes well beyond what has ever been considered by, by this city, in, in my understanding.
It's not gonna be exactly the 30 million, that number that you're mentioning. It would be 20 million specifically for the current fund. That's on resolution 261082025. The 7 million is part of a note that we already issued last year that we're just rolling over, and that one's in the water sewer funds, so that has no impact on that 3.5% limit that we're capped by. And then the 8.75 million under resolution 260, those are New Jersey Infrastructure Bank notes that we're taking out, and there's some principal forgiveness involved in those. So, that also won't be that full 8.75 million there. It's gonna be closer to 2 million, I think, when all is said and done.
Yep. So, what, what will, what will be the total amount of debt with the adjustments that you've just described?
Uh, in the current fund, which is the one that we have to play within that limit, that 171 million that you meant, it would be the 20 million.
All right. And I've noticed, and, and I didn't have much of a chance to look at what I was receiving this evening, but bonding for 40 minutes, for 40 years is a long time. And the amount of money that you repay on a, on a 40-year bond is significantly greater, frankly, than, than what I would consider to be reasonable. I hearken back to what we did with Convention Hall. That was like a 12 or a 13-year bond, and that, that'll be paid off in another year or two. And I know that all these num, all these terms vary significantly. There's no, there's no set term, but I would like consideration to be given to not look at 40-year bonding and try to, try to, try to pay down our debt. You know, some of the municipalities in our county are, are looking at, at zero long-term bond debt. We're, we're adding significantly greater amounts every year to our, to our bond debt. And frankly, what we're doing is we, we're, we're transferring on those payments to the next couple of generations. We're spending the money today, and they're gonna be paying it off in the next two or three or four generations.
Can I just comment on that also?
Sure.
So, the 40-year number, when we do bond ordinances, all of the projects have to be assigned a useful life determined by bond council. So, that's where things like buildings would get a 40-year useful life. When we actually issue the debt, however, we always issue just for a 10- to 15-year term. That's our typical debt service lifetime. We never issue for 40 years. I just wanna make that.
I hope not.
Clear? We do not. We try to keep it short. We roll in some of the smaller projects with the bigger projects, so that the average useful, uh, term of the bond is, like I said, 10 to 15 years.
And there's been the conversations and previously that the, the life of the items which we are bonding particularly become more expensive when they're five or six-year life expectancy. I would like those, obviously, not to be part of a bond, long-term bond issue. It really is, to our, to our disadvantage to do it that way, in my opinion.
Excuse me, Mayor Maloc.
The other, the other issue, I guess, comes in, when you look at the amount of bonding debt that you're creating, there's nothing in there for the desaline plant, for the seawall. My concern, and it also is the sand replenishment program. And unfortunately, hopefully, Aaron doesn't come and visit us.
You have to stick with me, Jules.
But it is a concern. We've been very, very fortunate for many years to not have any storm debt, and we don't, we don't, and, and I also understand, we don't, we're not able to have reserves for that. But I do caution ourselves as we move forward with this debt and think about how we have to repay it. And this, if we're going to develop surplus funds rather than sit on them, let's look at the bonds that we have and pay the bonds down. I also, on occasion, have mentioned to the mayor, even though we've not had a tax increase in the past years, I would frankly like to see the city consider a one-cent tax increase per year for the next couple of years, and that fund be used to pay down debt. I don't like debt. And debt, to me, is, is a cost that frankly is, is too burdensome on the generations to come. So, I, I present those comments to you. A question for you, Mr. Manager. Are we going to take any kind of proactive movement of sand in view of the potential for a storm? Are we gonna wait for a couple of days?
There's really no, for the size of our beach and, and how we manage our beach, there's no really ability, way to move sand from the lower beach and try to move it up to the higher beach to save it. That doesn't work.
No, we, before that, we, we used to put sand up in front of Convention Hall.
No, we're not. I mean, they're putting some, a little bit in front of lifeguard just as, to protect the equipment that's underneath of lifeguard.
That's gonna be the next question.
But as far as the, the beach is in sufficient condition that we don't need to do anything in front of Convention Hall.
I have a couple of other questions. I don't know if there's someone, someone else would like to speak.
Go ahead, Mr. Roush.
As, as we go through the, the projects that we have before us with the police, Harborview, the promenade, where do we really stand with regard to DEP approval and CAFRA permits? Do we have those in writing, in hand, with our conditions? And are they completely approved without any conditions?
Before, before you answer that, I, I do wanna just comment on one of the last things you said, because I, I agree with you about debt, okay? But I do wanna just make sure you understand, in the last, I think it's been now close to two years, if not three, we've been looking at $1 million in interest, because our debt has been causing less than our interest that we're receiving. So, I, I agree with you, and I think the day may come when we see those interest rates look the same, the interest looks the same on our debt as it is our investments. And at that point, you say, okay, we're gonna pay down debt. But I just, had we done that already, we wouldn't have made $1 million in interest. I just, just say that to you. It's been about numbers.
Well, fortunately, a great deal of our, our revenue is generated by users, the user fees.
Sure.
Beach tags, room tax, parking meters, and unfortunately, we've got interest on, on our sweep accounts.
But I'm, I'm talking really interest on, on, yeah, on, on surplus. You know, we, keeping that cash, getting interest on it, you know, rather than just paying down debt, has brought us in a million bucks.
I, I, I fully understand what that's done.
Yeah, yeah. I, I just, that's why, that's one of the reasons.
But going back to the DEP.
Sorry, yeah.
Where, where do we stand with regard to the permits and, and CAFRA?
So, we have, for the police station building, we do not need a CAFRA permit. We have, you know, essentially, we're just gonna need a construction permit. For, I don't know if we have all the other projects that we have outstanding and currently underway, we have all the necessary permits. We are in the process of getting a permit, a CAFRA permit for the lifeguard station expansion that we're looking at. We've gotten the CAFRA permit for the seawall expansion. We're in the final stages of receiving our CAFRA and Treatment Works approvals for the desalinization plant. So, as far as permitting standpoint, we're in good shape for all the projects that we're.
So, it's safe to say then, we're, we're, when we put things out to bid, when we go out to bid, we do have all the CAFRA permits or the DEP permits that are necessary.
For all of our current projects that we have out to bid and authorized to bid, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roush.
Karen, stay away.
All right, anyone else? Anyone else this evening? Seeing none, we can close public comment on resolutions. Go to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda, yes. Council, is there anything you'd like to remove from the consent agenda this evening?
Anything, council? No? Okay.
I'd like to abstain from August 5th council meeting minutes.
And July 1st, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you.
I'm gonna abstain from the special meeting minutes from July 15th, the closed session I'm voting on, but, that July 15th. But then the regular minimum meeting, July 15th, I'll abstain from as well.
Thank you. Perfect.
Anything else, council? Okay.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda, council?
Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Meyer?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Yes.
Councilmember Bodnar?
Yes.
Councilmember Baldwin?
Yes.
Mayor Maloc?
Yes.
Moving on to new business.
New business? City Solicitor, any new business?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
City Manager?
Um, I did forget to mention, so, we did have a wellness walk and talk scheduled for tomorrow, but because of the pending weather, that will be rescheduled to another day that hopefully will not be a rain day. Sorry, Mr. Bodnar, it seems like you've been getting rained out every time that you schedule one. But we will, we will find a day for you to get out there in a sun, sunside to do some walks. Otherwise, we're just gonna have to pick some rain jackets up for everybody, and we're just gonna have to walk in the rain.
I just wanna add, it's not my fault.
I know.
It's Aaron's fault.
It's, it's Aaron's fault.
I'll take the heat for that one, guys. Sorry. Sorry to rain on your parade.
Okay, city, speaking of, the city clerk, city clerk?
So, yes, Manager Dietrich mentioned this earlier, but the city hall is closed on Labor Day, Monday, the 1st, and the next council meeting is actually on Wednesday, September 3rd, and it's at 5:00 PM. So, this is the last 3:00 PM meeting for the season. We're moving back to the 5:00 PM meetings for the off-season. So, through the remainder of the year, unless otherwise denoted, we will be meeting at 5:00 PM.
That's it, council.
Okay. Councilmembers, Councilmember Baldwin?
So, I wanna talk a little bit about what we have coming up next year, because on the HPC, we've been working on our national designation. It's gonna be 50 years next year, which is really exciting. We're bringing back the HPC award plaques in a bunch of different categories. And then we're thinking about, is there any way that we can do some kind of fun, informative events for the public, kind of surrounded around that? And then furthermore, the city is also at 175 years next year, as well as the country is at a 250-year mark. So, for the city of Cape May, I think it really marks a great celebration year, and I think, you know, maybe whether or not we have three separate committees working, doing HPC, other, you know, two working on, you know, the celebrations throughout the year, and then all come together, I think it would be a really great thing for the city to, to celebrate. And, you know, we only have a few months until we're at 2026. So, yeah, think about it, if anybody wants to get involved, do anything, I have no problem kind of spearheading it and working with the, with the other groups, but I think it would be a, a great thing for the city of Cape May.
That's great.
And, and we have been, you know, city administration, we have been working on some things. We also have been coordinating with MAC, because obviously their displays and, and programs within the MAC, they, you know, so we're looking at creating a centralized logo, you know, to kind of celebrate all three of those events. Also, looking at possibly taking that, that logo that we're developing and maybe creating a commemorative beach tag to kind of sell as a commemorative beach tag to celebrate. Yeah, so yes, I, I, I think that we should continue to move forward. We're possibly looking at a fun run in May, because that's when the MAC kind of changes over their, their displays inside, you know, their events. So, maybe looking at an early May race to kind of, you know, commemorate that season and looking at other events also.
So, do we wanna make a subcommittee now, or what do you, what do you?
I, that, that would be fine.
Yeah.
If anybody else is interested. I mean, Paul.
We'll continue, yeah. We'll grab you and start rolling you into.
You can give us updates along the way and.
I'd be interested in participating, yeah.
Maybe in the city, maybe heading up the city, the city portion of it.
Yeah.
I can head up the HPC, being on the HPC, and then we can.
Councilman Bodnar, would you like to join me on the city one? I'm volunteering you.
Be happy to.
I'll talk with Councilmember Baldwin.
Is that good?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then we can, we can, we can pick up the county and then, or, or the, the, the country, and then the.
I have, I'm thinking in my head, let's go look at some microfiche and see what we got.
I like that, that's cool.
Fun. Okay.
Get your Uncle Sam outfit ready.
It's amazing what the county library has up there.
Yes, that's great.
They, they had a lot of information about the, the book brigade, you know, so, you know, there's a lot that we can look into that celebrates Cape May's history.
That's a great idea. Councilman Bodnar?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Deputy Mayor McDade?
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Councilman Meyer?
Lots of great stuff.
Cool, all right. Just to echo what the city manager said, you know, it's, it's just very unsafe in the water right now, so please stay out of it. With that, we'll open it up to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on any and all issues, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council. Peter Cole, 1075 Michigan Avenue, President of the TPA. If I may, I'd just like to announce that the TPA Tax Base Association is having their annual meeting on this Thursday, 1:00 PM, here in City Hall. We have guest speakers Zach Mullet, we have Curtis Bashell, Martin Van Walsum, and I'd love to see you guys there, and all our members, too. Although the hall couldn't take all our members, we have about 700, so I don't expect to see them there. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter, and thank you to the TPA. Happy to, happy to be there. And if there's anyone else, as anyone else comes up, you know, our, our deputy city manager handed me this earlier, and I almost forgot, but, you know, the city is lucky enough to get a lot of different awards, and this one ranked Cape May number one beach in New Jersey from TripAdvisor, which TripAdvisor could typically be one of the more difficult review sites. So, to get it from them is obviously a very nice compliment, and I know that's kind of user-generated, so that's, that's pretty cool. So, congratulations to everybody, and especially all of our lifeguards and people that are on the beach who do such a nice job for us. So, thank you. Mr. Roush, sorry about that, how can I?
Thank you very much.
Please name and address for the record.
My, my comments frankly are relevant to the workforce housing project, or zoning changes, ordinance change to 570. I'm, I'm very happy that you are passing that on to the, to the planning board. I, I have some, frankly, some very strong feelings about the house, the workforce housing. I, I think it's a great idea, no, thanks, that we provide workforce housing, and it should be designed. be designed for that purpose. And I've indicated in what I've handed out, what I feel is the purpose of workforce housing and not be conflicted with the potential for leaving those properties, along the mall in particular, for some other form of rental. I think they're distinctively different, and they should not be handled as you've proposed in the ordinance that they are the same.
I'm missing your point there. I apologize. Could you repeat it?
Workforce housing, as I understand it, is to be used for full-time city employees, people employed in the city.
Okay, can we answer that one before you go to the next one?
Sure.
Because I want to hear that. Is defined in the ordinance? Is that correct?
So workforce housing in the draft ordinance is defined, and it's not necessarily tied to work. That's one option, but really what it's tied to is duration. So this is to encourage long-term housing, which is most likely going to incorporate people that live and work in town, or maybe live in town and work elsewhere but live in town. What we're trying to avoid here is short-term rentals continuing to pop up in that area. There's already some there. This ordinance is not going to change that. Those will continue on as pre-existing non-conforming uses. But if someone were to alter the building, you know, propose a new development or something like that, what we're trying to do is avoid those Airbnbs and transient rentals from popping up, recognizing that those probably create more of a burden on parking in that area than would maybe somebody that's living there long-term and maybe biking around town or not needing to move their car all the time and that type of thing. And also recognizing from a policy standpoint, we want to have a town where people live here, and it's not just some place where people come for a few days and disappear. And those are important, too, and it's a tourist community, but we want to make sure that there's a balance for that. So that's what this is geared towards. But we're not going to be checking people's pay stubs under this ordinance. What we want to do is it's going to prevent people from pulling a mercantile license for a short-term rental if they have workforce housing designated for a unit there. And the flip side to that, and the benefit of that, is we're not going to charge you for parking, you know, in terms of a zoning standpoint. You're not going to have to seek a variance because you don't have parking, which everybody would if they want to develop something like that along the Washington Street Mall. Where are you going to create a parking space on the Washington Street Mall right now? It's just not going to happen. So...
Now, there's an alternative, and that alternative would be that they pay in lieu of a parking space.
Sure.
And that's another totally different issue.
This is the trade, though, under the...
I think we somewhat agree as a matter of how we get there. I believe there should be a mercantile license that is designated as workforce housing. And for that, they get the waiver of not required to provide parking. And you and I agree with that.
Well, we, there's a licensing component to this, like they'd still need to get a fire inspection, and they'd still need to register as a landlord, just like all our other long-term landlords in town. What they wouldn't be able to do is walk into the clerk's office and say, I want to get a mercantile license for a short-term rental. It's like, hold on a second. You have workforce housing.
I don't think they should be allowed to have that. I agree.
And that's already provided for in this. It specifically says you're not allowed to do that. And they can be violated if they say they're going to do that and they start renting it.
But as an owner of a property, I can do a long-term lease and totally disregard workforce housing.
Well, the potential for workforce housing is a long-term lease. Yeah.
But there's also the potential, our long-term lease, and not have to require parking.
Correct. And that's the policy initiative on the table, is this is promoting long-term housing opportunities, whether they're working in the building, working in town, working outside the building. The goal, ultimate goal, we use workforce housing, but workforce housing is defined to include anybody that's really living there for a long term.
I think that's fine. I don't disagree with that at all. I think frankly, if we're going to give somebody a waiver of the ordinance and not require parking, they ought to work in the city. I don't want them working in Wildwood or, you know, lower township somewhere.
So what's your suggestion on that exactly, Mr. Rousch?
Pardon me?
What is your suggestion specifically to that?
That workforce housing is a designation given to a property owner, and for that workforce housing, the individual has to work in the city, and as a result of that, he gets the waiver of requiring parking.
And I don't disagree with you, so that's why I'm asking more. Are you, how do we monitor that? How do we understand that?
A mercantile license would be specific as to workforce housing.
A workforce housing mercantile license?
It would be, they would have to apply to the zoning official for an approval, because it's a waiver of an issue that would normally be required.
So we would be almost similar, we might be, we'd have to have the copy of the lease to show who the person was.
And a pay stub.
No, I'm not suggesting that you need to know who it is, but the owner is specifying that I am going to dedicate my rental property
Right.
for workforce housing.
And that's what the ordinance says, but what I think we were hearing you say is that they have to work in the city, and I'm just trying to figure out how, as, you know, from the city's perspective, how do we validate that? Just their attestation to that?
No, the owner of the property has the boner to that.
I would, I understand completely what you're saying. The reason that it's crafted this way and not that way is because it recognizes the reality that we can have plenty of people that are living in this community, a part of this community, that don't necessarily work in the community, but they still contribute by living here. They shop at Acme, they shop at the local stores, they use the parks, they have families. That's really what this is targeted at. And so the policy lens is much wider under the current draft than would be in that. And I understand what you're getting at, but also it provides a more practical means of enforcing this, because what we're doing is we're saying, look, you can do anything beyond a short-term rental. Just don't do a short-term rental. You're not pulling a mercantile license, you're not putting it on Airbnb. We want people with long-term housing opportunities to live up there, and therefore you get a waiver of the parking requirements.
But what I'm getting at is, I don't want to see a long-term rental to someone that doesn't have to have a parking.
Are you pointing to like the three-month vacation?
No, somebody that just says, I'll rent this place for five years.
And works in Wildwood.
And for that, I get an exemption of my parking.
But it could be someone who's an educator, a teacher, someone who works as a nurse, and that doesn't necessarily, I think that those are important individuals to have in the community, because, you know, they're here providing a very valuable service and resource. So I think if we go too far to the extreme initially, Mr. Rousch, I don't disagree with you, but I think that this is a step in us trying to establish some boundaries around offers of workforce housing. It could evolve over time, but this will be a new concept to everyone in the city. And I think that if we make it too restrictive, you know, people will not perhaps, you know, want to adopt it if we make, we set up too many rules in the beginning. That's just my feeling. I'd like to see us make some movement on this.
I would like to see more workforce housing, and for that, you get a waiver of your parking. And just to be able to take a second or third floor on the mall and rent it out, I don't think you should be entitled to a waiver.
Can I suggest something? Do you mind? Deputy Mayor, would you be willing to meet with Mr. Rousch in regards to this topic?
Certainly, yeah.
With the Solicitor?
I'd be happy to.
Because I, here's the, why I think it's important to what you're saying is, this is new to the city, and it's basically a start. We could look at this as a bigger program throughout the town at some point. I mean, we all understand the necessity for workforce housing in the city of Cape May and frankly...
The other suggestion I'm making as part of this, my comments, are that we define how much space an occupant has to have, or that the property owner must provide for an individual occupant.
It's not a...
To eliminate, you know, 10 mattresses in a room.
They would still need fire inspections and everything, like...
I'm sorry?
There's a fire inspection, but that, what I think Mr. Rousch is talking about is, you know, there are state standard codes that you can adopt that require for a certain amount of living space, bedroom space, per occupant that would stay in the apartment.
I think that's a great idea.
And I think, you know, there are standards, and different towns have adopted different standards. So I think that's what Mr. Rousch is talking about, is creating new standards. We don't currently have those standards, and it becomes, it's, you know, they're hard to implement, because then you got to try to go in and figure out, what are you going to do with the potential non-conforming
Exactly.
housing stock that you have?
So could I get, and you can give us a report back with the caveat that, of course, this is going to the planning board first, okay? So they may have some of their own caveats.
Yeah.
And then we'll review that, but I'd appreciate if you would meet with Mr. Rousch on that.
Certainly, certainly. And, you know, some of these things might come up for discussion at the planning board, so, you know, we could maybe try and meet beforehand, so I can certainly opine on that with them, but...
Thank you. I appreciate the conversation that we're having. I frankly feel it's a very, very important subject for the city to recognize workforce housing. We need to get the people in town to live here to work. It's, I mean, I think we all understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rousch. Anyone else on any and all topics this evening? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
Time is 5:90.